Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, July 21, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you to those who are joining online as well. We welcome you also. Go ahead and get started by taking a roll, please. Councilmember Starr.
Here.
Recky. Erickson.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Knightser.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
All right. The purpose tonight to give invocation is Erica Varco. Erica is a Seminary student who also does local public supply here in our community. So I would ask that you rise for her invocation and then standing for our pledge allegiance.
Well, good evening, and thank you all so much for having me. Before I begin, I just wanted to let all of you here sitting know that when I'm serving at the community churches, I'm sure to always pray for all of you. So know that you're held in the prayers of a lot of churches in our community. And second, I watch a lot of these meetings online and on TV, and I feel that maybe you don't laugh enough up here.
It's true.
So in true Erica Varco fashion, for those of you that know me, I'm gonna tell a little joke. How's that?
Great.
Okay. So, you know how much a polar bear weighs? Enough to break the ice? Are you guys ready? Got that? Look at that. See? You got any more laughter up here? I invite you to all pray with me. Good ingratitude, God. We pause before the work of this evening to confess to give thanks, to share our burdens, and to pray for our city and these city leaders. May every decision they make, every phone call they pick up, every email they respond, be done with generosity of spirit. Help us all to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity and restraint. Give us all a spirit of service. We confess the ways we have become weary and worn by a political process, more often marked by them than by grace. We pray that you might intervene in hearts that have grown hardened. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. We acknowledge the many burdens carried into this work, for the city that supports them, the spouses, families, friends, neighbors, and loved ones who sacrifice so that they may be blessed them. We pray for all elected officials entrusted with the holy calling of public service. Keep them pure and We pray for those running for elected office. We pray for our president, our governor, our mayor, our counselors. God, that they are stewards of your authority. Guide them to be the leaders your people need. We pray for the residents of this city, since they serve. For all of those making difficult decisions during uncertainties and ever-changing circumstances, we pray for peace and faith. For all those seeking full, meaningful employment, we pray for work. For all those, we pray for powerful teachers. For all those seeking peace, pray for justice. So finally, God, bless the work that is before this evening. In all they do, in all they say, may they seek the welfare of our beloved city, finding joy in helping build a community love. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for having me. Take care this year.
Well, good evening. Tonight, we recognize Councilor Marshall Selberg, whose term as City Council Chair concluded last week. Over the past four years of serving alongside Councilor Selberg and council leadership, with the delayed City Council election because of the pandemic, his term was extended. Councilor Selberg probably wondered when his term would end. The City Council couldn't have had been served any better during this unprecedented time. Councilor Selberg's calm, steady hand was a thick temperament during a time of great uncertainty. The duties of Council Chair go well beyond what the public sees, and Councilor Selberg set a standard of excellence I can only hope to aspire. Marshall is a tireless advocate for the council and our staff, and he was decisive when we needed action. Marshall builds relationships. He was, in his respect, respected by all council, and all appreciated his communication and his collaborative attitude. Councilor Selberg is a bridge builder, and that's what makes him a great counselor and a great leader. On a note, when you get to know Marshall, you find out he has a great sense of humor. He's self-deprecating. He doesn't take himself too seriously, and he often has great one-liners. Councilor, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Sioux Falls, I'm honored to present you this glass gavel as a thank you for your leadership and your service as our City Council Chair.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Selberg, for your work as Chair the past year. And Councilor Knightser, looking forward to working with you as Chair, and Councilor Sale as Vice Chair. Let's move ahead now to our agenda with item number five, which is our Consent Agenda. Look for any changes or a motion to that.
Move through.
Second. All right. Motion by, was that Councilor Kylie there, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda, Council? Seeing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightser.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
All right. That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item 25, which is our Regular Agenda. Look for a motion on that.
Approve.
Second. Sale.
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Sale to approve that. Any discussion on that, Council? Hearing none, we'll take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightser.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next up is our Public Input portion of our agenda. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per minute, and in total lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on the agenda. For regular agenda items, following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes, unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. So at this time, I'd like to invite members of the public forward for general public input. Clerk, please note our time is 7:09. Good evening.
Well, good evening. Teresa Staley. It's the first time I've been up here with the three-minute buzzer. Let me see, Councilor Selberg is very steady, and thank God he never had to use the gavel. In, what, two years, a year that you were on. I'm here today to fathom, as I have my bouquet of flowers from my yard. Picked these today. Many of these came from my Boulevard Garden. And the promise is that Alex Jensen, who was my opponent during this recent election, he and I were in a forum at the Argus Leader, and I brought in some bouquet of flowers to illustrate things I had done as a counselor and also as a citizen to help promote Boulevard Gardening. Here's the brochure I'll talk about in a minute. But Alex, this very friendly debate, that he would like to purchase the bouquet for his wife, and I had needed it for another appearance I was doing later that day. I said, Alex, you know, win or lose, I'll give you a bouquet. And by the way, this is the second attempt I've made at bringing you flowers, Alex. So I picked this bouquet today out of my garden, and these are from the Boulevard area. Please keep this filled up to water to the top. It'll last a long time. I made this with love of my heart, you, Alex, and I'll put it, I don't want to take any of my time here, but I'll put that bouquet by the door. But I also want to take this time to talk about Boulevard Gardening. Back in 2015, my dear friend and Councilmember Greg Jamison reached out to me, because at that time, there was talk about refining the Boulevard Gardening ordinance. And Councilor Kylie is over there staring at me, because he was, of course, very involved in it as well. And we came up, working with citizens, because citizens are really the meat and potatoes of our government. We came up with this wonderful ordinance, and we have a brochure, and I think this is being updated. On the council, I asked about it. Jim David and I tried to find it, and we couldn't find it online. But this was a great little brochure. I would invite people, go to my Facebook page tomorrow, because I'm going to be doing a feature on Boulevard Gardening. I've been doing it for many years, and there are lots of plants, and a lot of these plants, by the way, that thrive in that Boulevard area. So as we move forward, Councilor Recky and I did a B-Ordinance last year. We started an energy, working with people, talking about environmentally friendly practices for our city. Hopefully, we'll be able to continue that, because even though I'm not on the council, I'm still a member of this community. And I pray for you, Alex, and all of you, that you will serve our people with the love, compassion, and deep respect that they deserve. And I got that done with 10 seconds to spare. Goodbye.
Thank you, Teresa. Good evening.
Good evening. With the big wall downtown here that's been kind of one of those nasty things for the city, I came up with an idea that might save your butt. See if you can find Banksy to come to town and do a little painting. A challenge for anybody here on
We know your name, but you better sit for the record.
My name is Robert Colby, citizen of Nia County.
Thanks, Bob.
Back again. Get Banksy here. Might save your butt. We have a park called Kowanus Park. See if you can find it. See if there's a public access to it. Five to seven years ago, I came here and complained about what was going on up at the Pioneer Monument, and somebody ran into the retaining structure. It still is not fixed. In fact, it's now a roadway back down into wherever it goes. People have been driving there. I complained about big-ass trucks. Friday night, I drove down the street, and I could not go south with the traffic going north. I have photos here. I'll leave them. There's a set of six. Maybe you can do something about it. A yellow line after which, anything that hangs over is ticketed, and if it's there more than an hour, it's towed. Okay? Happy birthday to Porter Williams today, and make one of the minions use this. And if anybody is looking for compliments when you're sitting there, you won't get them. You only get them when you quit, or when you die. And in the meantime, you're a public servant, so bear with them. Take care. Good luck, and stay healthy.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Hagen. I don't have anything to complain about. I arrived here from Washington State just 90 days ago, living in a town about 30 miles south of Seattle. And I decided it was time to make a choice about someplace else to live. So as we all do, you set up comparables, you know, put up options, and you get a list and so forth. And then I went to, oh, man, historically, I've watched your unemployment rate be very, very low for Sioux Falls, which means to me, everybody's working and engaged and got jobs, and they're working on jobs, and they're working their way up. And then I used to like to read stories about old Bill Janklow, how he used to go to Minneapolis and make him mad because he'd bring companies over to South Dakota because you've got a good education system, and he figured they could work here. Last summer, I, you know, one issue was, you know, there's just tribes of homeless people in where I came from. And so I came here last summer, and I drove about 60 miles back and forth across the town, all through streets. Couldn't find a single tent, nowhere. And then I even drove by a peaceful protest that was going on over on 41st. They were protesting peacefully. Nobody was breaking the law. So then finally, I made an offer on a house here. Got here about 90 days ago. And, you know, one of the things about homelessness is, one side will say, only say it's, and mental illness drove them to the street. But the other side is, cash to buy drugs may have drove them to the street and become mentally ill. I don't know the balance between those two, but that's where the study needs to be. Because the EBT card is just cash with a PIN number. No picture, no nothing. But the icing on the cake, of course, was, you had a little riot here. And I thought, oh, my goodness. But it was obvious the next day that there was no, but nobody had occupied territory. So somebody must have won. But you did planning. Every state in the nation can call their National Guard, you know, for, it takes manpower to cull out the bad from the good when the bad and the good are mixed together as people. You need that manpower, call the National Guard. You did. 10 minutes, over. Look what happened in Seattle and Portland, and it's terrible, but they won't.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Mayor Tenhaiken, councilors, my name is Brett Cooper, and my wife and I live here in Sioux Falls. I want to first thank you for your leadership during this unprecedented time. I'm speaking to you tonight to encourage you to institute a citywide mask mandate in Sioux Falls. I'm sure you're aware of the data supporting the effectiveness of face masks in preventing the spread of COVID-19. I'm inspired to know the United States has the ability to very quickly conquer this pandemic once a critical mass of the population wears masks. In a July 14 interview with the American Medical Association, CDC Director Robert Redfield said, quote, "I think if we could get everybody to wear a mask right now, I think in four, six, eight weeks, we could bring this epidemic under control." And this testimonial also rings true on a local level. Dr. Wendell Hoffman, an infectious disease doctor with Sanford Health, was asked during a July 13 interview if he agreed with the Surgeon General's statement that if we had a critical mass of people wearing face coverings, practicing six, excuse me, six feet of social distancing, and doing other effective things, that we can turn the nationwide rise in cases around in two to three weeks. He simply said, yes, completely. My wife and I attended the July 13 School Board meeting, where board members discussed that a mask mandate is something that needs to happen, but they feel their hands are tied without a citywide ordinance. In visiting with a school board member on the topic, I was told, quote, "One hurdle we face is that our state nor our community has required face covering, so we're trying to navigate the legal issues regarding it, since we're a public entity serving all of our children." It appears that every change-making entity in Sioux Falls is waiting for someone else to take action and do the right thing, and it's putting the public at risk the longer we wait. Sioux Falls prides itself on being a leader in the state and is a trusted role model for other cities in South Dakota and across the nation. So let's be the leader and role model that we say we are. True leaders are proactive. Instituting a mask mandate will validate your proactive leadership and will surely be easier to manage than reacting to an upsurge in COVID cases. Additionally, I'm confident a mask mandate will be beneficial to the city's long-term fiscal health. I want to get out and support local businesses, but for my safety and for the safety of others, more of my dollars have gone to Amazon than to downtown lately. With a mask mandate in place, residents will know they're a part of a safe environment, and they'll be more inclined to participate in city activities and offerings, leading to larger local revenues and better economic well-being. As of this afternoon, the CDC stated that 140,157 people in the United States have died as a result of COVID-19. And I anticipate, by the time of your next meeting, the national death toll may have surpassed the population of Sioux Falls. The number of COVID cases in Sioux Falls isn't surging yet, and hospitals are still operating at a manageable capacity. So please, take this opportunity to proactively ensure the safety and health of your city while you can. I'm grateful to be a part of Sioux Falls, which has been on the front end of elevating the quality of life in the region for decades. So please let this public health emergency be your chance to prove to the community that you truly care about its safety and quality of life. Thank you.
Thanks, Brett. Good evening.
Sierra Bruce on Sioux Falls. Okay, so what did we have last Tuesday? I just got off the phone with the lieutenant a few minutes ago. Mr. Whitman for pimping and prostitution and human trafficking. Let me tell you that it took me like a needle in a haystack to get the police on this investigation. It's not over with yet. I would be in Pierre through pheasant season, and at, in the cabins and the lodges, we have human trafficking, prostitution, and pimping there with the rich people. Also in Chamberlain, y'all would die if I could tell y'all the names of these people flying these prostitutes in from Las Vegas during pheasant season. We need to expose the rich people here. I asked the mayor, we get call-ins to the police department. When people call in for licensures, the police can go in, the police officers, and look for licensures and ask them to, if their licensures match up on the wall. It is not the Health Department, and it's not the Massage Board's responsibility. It is the responsibility of the Police Department. That's why Johnny Keller put in that massaging without a license. She put that in for a reason. We need to take massaging seriously. We have two more, and one of them is a massage therapist. He's been doing this for seven years in the making. I do not need a superhero ordinance, but I'm going to tell you, I've been on my foot with the Police Department for these two and a half to three weeks on this. So if y'all see any of those signs in Greg's district, Marshall's district, those signs can be removed if it's on city property. Please call the Police Department and let them know about massaging without a license and prostitution and everything else in this book here. Before I end this, I can't name the landlords, but we need to make sure that we're screening our tenants and not just putting anybody in our commercial property here. As soon as this investigation is over with, it might be a couple months, I need to address it with some of these landlords, because Mr. Whitman should have never been in this facility doing what he was doing with these individuals. And we're not just talking about Asians. This is a white crime, a black crime, and everybody's crime in this investigation here. So when I come up here and say to the police and address the mayor to put his foot down on the Chief of Police, I meant what I said. We need to take this seriously in this city, and that's all I can say at this point.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Greetings. Hi, David Zalkitis, and I'm here to talk tonight about decorum during public input. Well, in general, you know, when we all know what to expect in a meeting, it works better. And it also works better when we're nice and polite and respectful. And typically, a public speaker like myself might address the whole council and not an individual counselor. So far, so good. All right. Now, last week at public input, we had a loss of decorum. Well, I'm trying to prevent that from happening again, so that's why I'm here. Okay, now, I looked for guidelines regarding city council meetings, and I found three different guidelines. There's an executive order, there is a city ordinance, and then there's the First Amendment. That reads that, in part, "Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech." Very important. And then I tracked down the Supreme Court ruling, this one here. It says that in a public forum like here now, you've got, if you want to modify what people say, you have to be strictly limited, and you have to serve a compelling government interest. So then, what does that mean? Well, according to Wikipedia, a compelling government interest might be national security. I don't think we have any national security problems here at city council meetings. So I've got some recommendations based upon this analysis of mine. First, in general, we should be gentle and address the whole council when we can, but the city cannot legally require this. And the city ordinance that requires this is therefore unconstitutional and should be updated. I asked the city attorney to check my legal analysis, and haven't heard back yet. So those are my recommendations. And there's some question about how boisterous we can get. I want everybody to know that clapping is apparently okay, because we had a standing ovation last week. So if that's okay, then at least we all know, so we're clear about that. And as always, try to have something to smile and enjoy life about, so that everybody's happier when you're up here.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Good evening.
Tim Stanger. Had a lot of phone calls after the meeting last week, and they asked me what I thought of it. Told them, I said, really and truthfully, it shouldn't surprise one person outside of this. I said, I told them, I said, this is just run like Washington, DC. We have corruption all the way through, not just city, Pierre, and Washington, DC. You know, the mayor says that you can't call people by names. That's fine with me, because we can make names for people. One thing I found out is, when Superman or Wonder Woman talk, you got Nancy Pelosi that's got to put her two cents in, then you got Jerry Nadler, Shifty Shift, and then you have, everybody follows us. Because why? Because they can do that. Because they know how to say yes. Everybody, nobody has opinions, and everybody's opinion, if Superman or Wonder Woman have an opinion, then what we have to do is, we have to cut them down. And how our votes went last week, people seen it on TV how obvious things were. It was pathetic. When you have Shifty Shift, that has to come up with a little speech to say how great one city counselor is when there's only one person that's going to be running, because they already had it set up two or three days before they came to the meeting. It's just pathetic. And then our Vice Chair, Jerry Nadler, he ain't much better, because he can't even go through the neighborhoods that he stands up for to make sure that they're safe, and that there isn't any plywood on windows. That's a leader. Then it comes down to number four. $117,000 to be number four, especially when you get Nancy Pelosi that ran and helped him get elected, probably gave him some money, probably had a, some kind of a fundraiser for him. People, this should not surprise you one bit. It's not going to change in this city until the citizens step up and say enough is enough.
Anyone else this evening? Good evening.
Good evening, Council. Ryan Tisdale, 1001 Covey Circle. Sioux Falls is an awesome place to live. Growth is happening in virtually every direction of our city. This growth is the result of planning and cooperation between real estate developers and the city. I was slightly alarmed when I heard comments at a city council meeting a couple weeks back, where an outgoing counselor said they were, quote, "for the people and against developers." This is absolutely not how I think we should be thinking of this conversation. Successful developers are key to Successful developers are key to having a vital city. Simon Van Busker, General Growth, Lloyd Friesen, Signature, Harlemi, Ryan Companies, Costello, the list goes on. It's important for the city and developers to value each other and to respect and respect the projects at hand. Look at the city and all the development that would not exist without these developers. The Empire Mall, Downtown, Uptown, Meadows on the River, Lake Lorraine, The Bridges, Dolly Farm Village, Heather Ridge, the Sanford Sports Complex, 85th and Minnesota. These developments would not exist without the vision of numerous developers, and they're willing to take a huge risk to bring that vision to life. In some cases, developers have everything on the line. Their tolerance for risk cannot be overstated. I've heard comments in the past that many developers' projects are rubber stamped by the city council. Some say the council and the city let developers do whatever they want. What the vocal minority doesn't see is the months or years of planning that goes on behind the scenes to fine-tune a project before it ever hits the desk of the council or the public side. There are countless meetings with the talented individuals at the city, the planning, the zoning staff, civil engineers, architects. By the time a project is seen by the Planning Commissioner of City Council, a developer may have tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars invested. The pursuit cost of these projects can be substantial. The partnership and conversation between the city and developers should be celebrated. The spirit of working together for a better Sioux Falls continues to be the goal of the city as well as private developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else this evening? All right, seeing no one else, we'll move on to our next item, please, clerk.
Item 27, new 2021 retail malt beverage, South Dakota farm wine license and 2020 retail wine and cider license for Classical Gas LLC, Classical Gas, 200 South Main Avenue, CUP not required. Item 28, new 2021 retail malt beverage, South Dakota farm wine license and 2020 retail wine and cider license for Henderson Construction LLC, Monksdale House, 420 East Eighth Street, pending final inspections per health. Item 29, new 2021 retail malt beverage, South Dakota farm wine license for Edward Zayon Jona Kitchen and Bar, 323 Northwest Avenue, CUP not required. Item 30, new 202021 retail malt beverage, South Dakota farm wine license for BOB LLC, Blue Rock Bar and Grill, 4021 North Bob Holla Drive, CUP not required. Item 31, transfer of 2020 package liquor license from Grevco Incorporated Shopping Card East, 4301 East 12th Street to AD Association LLC, Shopping Card East, 4301 East 12th Street, CUP not required. Item 32, new 202021 retail malt beverage, South Dakota farm wine license for Shenanigans Pub Incorporated, Shenanigan Sports Bar and Grill, 1903 South Ellis Road. Item 33, transfer of 2020 package liquor license from Shenanigans Pub Incorporated, Shenanigan Sports Bar and Grill, 1903 South Ellis Road to Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Company Incorporated, Tenor's Public House, 449 West 69th Street. Item 34, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Hoffberger Escape LLC to be operated at 610 West 49th Street for a special event on July 25, 2020. Item 35, special one-day malt beverage license for El Ria's Shriners to be operated in Nyberg's Ace Parking Lot, 200 East 12th Street, First Avenue, between 11th Street and 14th Street, East 12th Street and East 13th Street, between Phillips Avenue and Second Avenue, for Hot Classics Night on July 25, 2020. Item 36, special one-day malt beverage licenses for Almost Home K-9 Rescue to be operated at the East Parking Lot, 300 North Sherappa Place and Multicultural Center, 515 North Main Avenue, alternate location in event of inclement weather, for 605 Summer Classic on August 8, 2020. Item 37, special one-day liquor license and special one-day off-sale wine license for Catholic Community Foundation for Eastern South Dakota to be operated at the Veritek Building, 212 East 11th Street, for a fundraiser on August 29, 2020. Item 38, special one-day liquor license for KMP Enterprises to be operated at the Nickel Spot Parking Lot, 2918 South Minnesota Avenue, for a special event on August 29, 2020. Item 39, special one-day liquor license for the Zoological Society of Sioux Falls to be operated at the Great Plains Zoo and Delbridge Museum, 805 South Kuanis Avenue, for a fundraiser on August 12, 2020. Item 40, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Senior Citizen Services Incorporated to be operated at Active Generations, 2300 West 46th Street, for Gourmet Guys fundraiser on August 30, 2020. And item 41, special one-day liquor licenses for Sioux Falls Sports Authority to be operated at Minnehaha Country Club, Course Only, 3101 West 22nd Street, for PGA Tour Champions Event to be held September 6 through 13, 2020.
Hi, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions you may have on items 27 through 41. And I also would need to request a motion to withdraw item 27 at the request of the applicant. They're building, it's taking a little longer than they had originally planned, so they're going to hold off for now.
All right, thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to any of these items, 27 to 40 here? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jamie on any of these?
Move to withdraw, item 27. Knightzert.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion to withdraw by Knightzert on item 27, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion on that, counsel? All right, we'll vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Look for a motion on items 28 to 40.
Motion to approve items 28 through 41.
Second.
Forty-one, yes, thank you. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Selberg to approve those items. Any discussion, counsel? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote on those, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 42, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 36, Finances, Section 36.029, publication of advertisement for bids.
Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, counselors. Really, this is some cleanup language that was brought forth by the legislature this last session. The bill went into effect on July 1st. Again, we're just amending our ordinances to put it in line with state law. So again, just clean up, some cleanup language. Any questions for me? I'll be here to answer questions.
Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here? Counselors, do you have any questions for Scott on this one?
Move approval. Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to approve this item. Is there discussion on the council? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item 43.
Item 43, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux District Number 12302-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning commends approval six to zero. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 4, 2020.
Good evening, Albert.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Albert Schmidt, Sioux Falls Planning and Development Services Office. This rezoning request is also in conjunction with another thing. We're hoping to set the second reading for the upcoming meeting here two weeks from now, but at that same meeting, you also see the preliminary settlement plan come through as resolution, so this kind of coordinate together. The applicant here is Paul Fick Holmes. The owner is the Crowell Family Partnership. This is located southwest of South Six Mile Road and future East 49th Street. As indicated here on the map, the size is approximately 4.91 acres, and you can see it's ag to RS, the traditional single-family house, just like everything else around it. The purpose is to extend that subdivision by approximately 18 single-family home lots to the south there. I'll take any questions you have.
All right, thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? All right, counselors, do you have questions for Albert on this one? All right, look for a motion.
Move to approve, Erickson.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Sale. That's to set a second reading for Tuesday, August 4. Any discussion, counsel? All right, we'll take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 44, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 37, taxation. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 4, 2020.
Good evening, Dustin.
Evening, council. Dustin Powers with Planning and Development Services. Item number 44 is an ordinance amending code of ordinances, Chapter 37, taxation. This is related to our reduced taxation programs that we have for the city of Sioux Falls. There was a House bill passed in the 2020 legislative session that changed some of the subsections that our ordinance referenced. So that is one of the major changes that is made on the document that you see on the screen under 37085, the authority granted for our neighborhood program. So that's just amending that to be consistent with our other programs and codified law. And then the rest of the changes to the ordinances that you see in front of you are some cleanup language from former community development, switching that over to Planning and Development Services as the department that handles these programs. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you, Dustin. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here? Counsel, do you have any questions for Dustin on this item?
Move approval.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 4 for this item. Any discussion, counselors? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 45, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, declaring certain real property, the city's surplus, and approving offer to purchase real estate from the city. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 4, 2020.
Evening again. Tonight is a first reading and an ordinance for a purchase agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Connolly Properties LLC. Connolly Properties tonight is represented by Alex Connolly, the owner of Culligan Water, which borders the subject property that we're talking about to the east. The subject property is located at 1600 West 51st Street. This site is the remaining portion of the old Minnehaha County ICE and Rec Center facility, and the entire parcel totals approximately 53,000 square feet. If you recall back from 2017, the city council approved the gifting and the sale of the property to the west of the subject property, and that agreement was with the Glory House for them to do the development of housing units for the individuals that went through their program. And that is where you can kind of see some of the construction happening there to the west that was just getting started on the first phase of their project, and recently has gone through the community appeals process and received the rest of the funding needed to continue work on the remaining units that they presented at that time. In early 2019, Alex Connolly reached out to the Planning and Development Services Department to determine the city's interest in selling the remaining portion of the property. Over the last year to 18 months, we've had several conversations with Alex on what he would like to propose and do on the property. We've also reached out to Dave Johnson, the president of the Glory House, to get their input on the project, and then also any future needs that they would like to see for their facility as they continue to grow in the area as well. Based on those conversations, we determined with both the parties that we could subdivide the land and provide the necessary square footage to the Connolly Properties to expand their existing business with Culligan Water, as well as still have an opportunity to work with the Glory House in the future, on any future plans that they may have. So of the remaining 53,000 square feet that you see on that site, we will be subdividing that to where 38,317 square feet will be sold to Connolly Properties, which is reflected on the screen as well as in the purchase agreement, which will leave about a third of an acre for possibility of working with the Glory House in the future on future expansions once they get through building their residential units that they're currently working on. Just a few details about the development in the agreement, and on the slide, you'll see the proposed site plan for the project. Very generic site plan. Obviously, we're still working, Connolly Properties is still working on the design of how that will be situated on the property. There is a drainage easement that we'll talk a little bit later that we'll have to come in front of the city council for vacation as well before we could close on the property. But moving forward with the development, we'll obviously provide additional storage for the current business, Culligan Water there. Obviously, they're outgrowing their current facility to the east of this site, and the reason bringing this forward is so that they can expand, and also provide them the opportunity to expand their business operations in the future as well. And also, by selling the property, we'll be putting this back on the tax rolls. It's just some of the general terms of the purchase agreements. This is with Connolly Properties LLC. 38,317 square feet is what will be sold. The purchase price is 162,465, which is the full appraised price that equates to about $4.24 per square foot. Also in the agreement, substantial completion of the new warehouse has to be completed within 24 months of closing. Also, prior to closing, as I discussed, there's a vested drainage easement on the property that they'll have to work through the process of getting that vacated through our Public Works Department, and is working on starting that process now. They'll also be required to file a plat and replat the property as well. And then, as with most of our purchase agreements that we've brought forward, we do have a repurchase option in the agreement that if the development doesn't occur within the timeframe established within the agreement, the city has the right to repurchase the property at a lesser rate than what we've sold it. So with that, this is a first reading, setting the second reading for August 4, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Dustin. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Dustin or for the gentleman from Culligan? Counselor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Powers, I'm trying to, two things. One, the action we took, didn't we declare the whole parcel before we subdivided it surplus? Or did we split it? That's why I'm just wondering why we declared it surplus twice.
We did, the resolution approving the, when we went through this in 2017, did approve the entire parcel, which was considered Lot 3 at that time. We just, it's a little redundant, but it doesn't hurt to just, because there's a new legal description of Lot 3C, just to go ahead and, as part of this ordinance, it's the same approval mechanism for the purchase agreement, to go ahead and do that again, so.
I just get points for remembering something, so that's really the only reason I want to point it out. The other question was, I thought the property, when we sold it, part of it to the Glory House, appraised at over $6 a square foot, like 615, 625, and now this is saying that it's 424 a square foot. What's different? I haven't seen much commercial property in Sioux Falls drop by a third.
Yeah, some of that appraisal took into consideration that the building, the structure that was on the site, because we did that appraisal prior to the demolition of the building, or demolition of the Rec Center. So I believe that appraisal took into consideration some of that, as well as you were looking at a much larger site when you were looking at all of those three parcels combined as one, instead of looking at just this site on its own. So we did have it reappraised. It was the same appraiser that actually provided the appraisal the first time around, used the most recent comparables in the market, and that's how the $4.24 came about.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions for Dustin from the council? All right, look for a motion on this item.
I would move to set it. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Counselor Brecky.
Move to approve the data hearing.
Second.
All right, motion by Counselor Brecky, seconded by Starr to set a date of second reading for. Go ahead, Counselor Brecky.
Move to approve the data hearing.
Sac.
All right, motion by Counselor Brecky, seconded by Starr to set a date of second reading for August 4. Any discussion amongst the council? Counselor Brecky.
I was anxious to approve this. I do want to thank the mayor's office. I want to thank Erica Beck. I want to thank Jeff Eckoff. I've had conversations with them when I first joined the council about my interest in seeing a campus-like atmosphere show up on site, and one of the things I learned that that is in keeping with kind of sort of what we're doing with the Triage Center, because the Triage Center that we just, in a monumental step in helping us begin the process of treating our community patients, our community citizens who suffer from addiction, and the follow-up to that, and two of the goals, two of the four goals that that original Triage Committee set, goals three and four, which they haven't really begun working on, are already in the process of expanding its offerings. And so, because of the current location, which is a good location for something like this, it doesn't have a lot of, instead that their long-range plan was taken into consideration as we began to figure out as a city what we wanted to do with this extra property. And so I'm really, and you've kind of now brought them into their long-range planning process so that we can hold on to that to the extent that we can work together with them as they may need to expand their offerings, being four of their goals at some point, as how this community is going to address the need for more treatment, you know, as we begin to funnel these people through our, Jeff Eckoff for their foresight on this, and I do really expect that at some point in the future, you'll be back and the Glory House will have additional plans for this, and I look forward to.
Other discussion, counsel, on this item? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item 46.
Item 46, a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the Hollerick Edition.
Evening again, Albert Schmidt again. This is a petition to annexation by the applicant Lloyd Companies. The owner is currently Darrell and Janet Code and West Point First Street on kind of the very west side of town. The size is approximately 23.25 acres, and the purpose here is to construct, viewed it, gone through our view process, is recommending approval. The next process, as you may remember, will be rezoning and going through those kinds of subdivisions as well. Thank you. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thanks, Albert. Counsel, do you have any questions for Albert on this one?
Move approval? Knightzert.
Second, Selberg.
Motion by Knightzert and seconded by, all right, hearing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Move to adjourn, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.